All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for raving this lovely spring weather we're enjoying. Tonight, March third is a town of Pittkin work session meeting. And so at this time, I will call this meeting to order. We have in attendance up front here, we have Jared Garretson, Ramon Reed, Tom Gibb, Ed Pinalto. In the audience, we have via Zoom. We have Ricky Miller and Lucinda Lowell. And in the audience attending tonight, we have Jesse Garretson, Pete Olson, Sar Varnell, and it looks like Chad Varnell made it in just in time for that spring storm. Okay, so we'll get started. So the first item on the agenda tonight, and I'm hoping that tonight rolls smoothly, rolls smoothly. The first item on the agenda tonight is our attorney employment agreement. Mr. Clay Bookner's status as an attorney and his abilities, not his abilities, but just they have, anyway. What does he become? A judge?
Yeah, I think he's a, no, district attorney. It's a DA.
Yeah, one of those things, yeah. Which which changes his status that he's able to work for town for. And so tonight's discussion is regarding the transfer from that previous status to being that of an employee. And we have in front of us an employment agreement with town of Pittkin attorney. And I looked through this last week and we, some of us, last week, last meeting, and some of us looked, had looked through it and had a few questions for Mr. Bookner, who is not with us tonight. And so is there any discussion from the front regarding this agreement?
This is, this is Jared.
Yes, ma'am.
The, under page one, under page one, at the very bottom, the last sentence, I wondered if it would be, this is probably just a housekeeping thing, but if, it says, "The employee will not provide any additional legal services on behalf of or to the town other than those specified above without consult, first consulting with the town." And I wondered if it should say the town, the town board of, the Pittkin Board of Trustees or the Town Board of Trustees instead of just the town and then that second town also. That's my question.
So throughout the whole agreement, the town of Pittkin is referred to as town. And so that's what he talked about there.
Oh, I know what he's talking about, but I would request that that would be changed just for clarity myself. That that would just be my suggestion. That was all I had.
Well, I suppose that, I suppose that depends on, yeah, I've said it's a-
Saying it's a big deal.
No, well, so the town, sort of a, what shall I say? A collective terminology, not specifically plural, but is inverted. So I don't have any preference on that. I think the town's fine, but any other thoughts?
I, I would just like for us on our next meeting, when he's on board, if he would be opposed to that.
Changing it to the town of Pittkin?
Yeah, I think all it would be, it would be-
Town trustees or the Board of Trustees or what?
Pittkin Board of Trustees.
Pittkin Board of Trustees.
Pittkin, yeah, Board of Trustees or Town Council, however.
Any thoughts on that? What's that, Ed?
I would prefer revenge change.
You would confer with Pittkin Board of Trustees. So at every juncture through here.
No, I just, that one is the one that I thought was-
This is the one that caught your eye?
Well, that's just the one that I thought actually needed-
Well, yeah, and I see, because up above that, we have representation of the town. And, and then we get over to number two, and the town recognizes the attorney cannot guarantee this or that. So that's what I was saying, that, that there's sort of a identity here of the town. And the town is a collective and so. This is the only place through this document that you saw that and that caught your eye.
Yeah, that's just my suggestion.
Ramon, you have any thoughts on that?
I don't have a problem with that either.
No problem? Ed has no problem? Jared would like that. Sir, do you see that as an issue?
Um, I'll just put it in there and then when I send it back to Clay, he can let us know if it works.
I'm happy with that as well. I suppose if we're all in agreement, then we're all, it's a work session. Do, we don't really put on a lot.
Nope, nope. Just a suggestion.
Well, if we're all in agreement on that, then moving on, anything else? I noticed all the things that he was not eligible for, which included, you know, life insurance, health insurance, retirement benefits, et cetera. And he will, he will be reimbursed at travel costs at such times as he might come to see us at what is the prevailing IRS rate. And then a per diem and lodging and meals. And that's set by the General Services Administration of the County of Gunnison. And I don't suppose we need to determine what that is, because that's probably an ongoing fluctuating, could be an ongoing fluctuating item.
Am I right in thinking, I mean, basically, there is no change in what he's doing now? Our, our agreement with him now, to me, it was strictly housekeeping to him or whatever he needed. But I didn't see any change that we needed to be concerned about. Is that right? You know, from what we had formerly with him.
I did not pick up on anything to. Yeah, I didn't pick up on any changes. Sir, do we, did you pick up on any?
Um, just a couple of things. So on page two, number one, that's compensation payment. Um, because because he's not eligible for overtime, he's not sitting in a month probably to adjust the compensation schedule to account for the fact that not every month, but some months, he will be doing additional work over above five hours that he provides for the town. Um, also, it says that it paid on a bi-weekly basis. He probably just used a template, but we need to change that to monthly because that's how it typically be paid.
Okay, so compensation for additional overtime and then, and then we have to come up with a number that is compatible with what he has been, probably what he has been achieving.
So just kind of compare what I did, because I went back over the last few years and kind of got an average of how many overtime hours our attorneys work per year. And it, it's between 10 and 15 extra hours per year. So currently, Clay, as, as a contractor, we pay him 900 a month. And then for each additional hour, he's paid 190. And so if we were to, let's just be on the, the higher side, just to make sure that we're covering his work. If we were to pay him for an additional 10 hours. So we've got. So 10,800 is his base pay. And then if we were to add 1,900 for an additional 10 hours or if we wanted to add an additional five hours or 15 hours.
Could you repeat that?
Sure. What part do you want me to repeat? The whole thing?
Well, I've never seen the original contract, so I don't know how the overtime is.
So I believe it's anything over five hours. So the five hours includes phone calls per month? Yeah, so, so his, his base amount is $900. That includes attending meetings, that includes fielding phone calls, questions, memos, anything within that amount of time. Then if he goes over that, it's $190 an hour.
Um, what I would like to do is if you would contact Clay and ask him to put wording into that effect on the overtime part.
I don't think it's going here, I wouldn't see it.
No, it's not. And so I guess the question would be, is the town want to pay him a monthly salary and presume that he's going to go between 10 and 15 hours over, which is what is pretty, historically, that's been pretty accurate, between 10 and 15 additional hours. This is over the last, I think I looked at the last four years with, with overage hours. So we can either just calculate that and that's his monthly salary and that's what it is for everything that we need. Or we can give him a base salary and then anything over five hours to get paid an additional. So it depends on how the board wants to.
Well, so it could go either way. Because if you, if it's-
Or it could just be per hour. But, but he, but with the minimum of five hours paid regardless, you know, if he works four hours, then we'd be paying.
Right.
Kind of how attorneys roll.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I'll make a suggestion. Based on the way he wrote this, I would say to do the monthly 900 per month. And have him write, add, add to his compensation payments for over five hours per month, $190 per hour.
What's that number, over five?
I, I was gonna-
Five hours, $190 per, if I understand correctly, I'd like to know. I've not seen the original contract, so I think what you're saying is his original contract is 900, up to five hours, over five hours.
So base pay of 900 and then he would invoice us for anything over and above.
Then I was going to suggest that too, because that's what we currently, that was what he signed on for. That's what we currently have and are operating under, I believe. So I just, I guess I just assumed that that's, that part would remain the same.
With, with, excuse me, with the, with his original contract, I don't know. Sarah, did you sit down and compare it to this?
I did not.
I'd be curious to look at that.
I can't hear you, sorry.
I'd be curious to look at that, but I didn't have the computer.
Um, two, two other things. One, in, in number five, in addition, it says near equal installment on a bi-weekly basis. And I would change that to monthly for us to do bi-weekly payments is, you know, rather complicated since we approve them on a monthly basis. Um, the second thing I would like is on the, oh, number 10, mileage and travel costs. I would simply like to know what the specifics are, what it would add up to for him to come here for a meeting. Okay, that, that's what we're likely to pay him on mileage on.
Well, I think you can take mileage times, now, on your, on your tax return, mileage for business is currently, I think, at 69 cents. If I recall correctly.
It's 70 for 2025.
It's what?
70 cents a mile.
Oh, it is gone up to 70.
So that would run us about $250 from, if we stay both ways, where he was back. Um, let's see.
Would you figure out the hundred and ten?
175.
That's one, that's one one.
Right, so 350, yeah.
What'd you say, the 2025, or that's six?
70. And then lodging is 100, between 107 to 110 per night. Um, there are some non-standard areas with higher rates. I have no idea if that would include Gunnison area. Meals and incidentals, 68 per day.
How many per day?
Eight.
That gets you three meals. So 68, 68.
Sixty.
Okay. How many miles is it over here?
175 one way.
Uh.
So we're looking at about 425, give or take, there and back. And I don't know if we look at it as town or whatever, but about, about $250 or 400, sorry, 425.
At those rates, the zoom might be appropriate.
Well, so, then along that line, that's one of the, one of the comments I have. Is on the, on the exhibit A, he's put in there, he can attend rare town board meeting whenever possible to get a student sent. Uh, via Zoom, and then three times a year, per request, per request, for the trustees, and then per city meeting. I'd recommend minimum three times a year for $425. I think it's reasonable to be here.
I, I can't hear you, Ed.
Three times a year for at least quarter, at least once a quarter.
Well, yes, at that price, I would like to see him. The question is, at whose discretion is the visit? Because you're saying, you want to see him three times a year or when we call him. But, and what if he's already visited us three times on his own because it was convenient and then?
And so I think that an additional time would be the Board of Trustees deciding that he needs to be here for a particular.
So you, you would like to see him three plus whatever we ask him to do?
Right.
Not, not just?
And I say that because we've had him now for a year. He's on better market. He needs to be here. He needs.
But if we have a light agenda or something, you know, my problem with that is at that rate, and I mean, I covet his knowledge. I've not met the man yet. I voted to, to employ him, but I, I've not ever met him. And mostly, that's my fault with my life this last year. But I, I just have a, we'd want to be careful when we want him to come at that rate.
I, I agree, but I'm looking at it $1,500. And I think it goes above the last year, 76 pounds. So I know $1,500 is $500, but I think it's, I think it's important for the town attorney to come to the town of Pittkin.
Oh, I, I'd like to see him, but I'd like to see him when we really need him.
I agree. I don't know how you do that. If it's three times a year, you do it in four months. I don't know how you're going to fix which meeting without planning in advance.
Yeah, which brings us to the question regarding planning in advance. If we did, if we did say, well. So my reluctance on the just blanket three times a year is that Jared is correct. Sometimes our meetings are quite light. We don't have much. And, and then while it may be nice to see him, might not have been quite so necessary as some other times.
The unfortunate part is we don't know the agenda until 48 hours ahead of the meeting. And I know you, you're not available to plan with him 48 hours in advance to come for that.
No, you're, I totally expect that's correct.
Unfortunately, in the middle of months, these are the time he shows up. That way he ran ahead.
Ramon, you have any thoughts on this?
Um, not really, because, you know, our, our meetings vary so greatly. Um, even attendance is very quite a bit. I, I think it, it needs to, you know, I, I think I would leave it to the discretion of the attorney, but I would recommend that any of these trustees, including myself, who think it's needed coming up to relay that to the mayor and try to deal with it that way. I guess, you know, setting it on a, a specific basis, just, I, I don't see that that would necessarily meet our needs.
All right, we had a, had a comment from Mr. Garrison. Anybody else in our attendance here have a thought on this subject?
I've got a, got a question. I think cost per trip is going to exceed four and a quarter. If you're going to pay a hotel bill.
Five eighteen.
Then I'll be, maybe I'll pay two days to see him. I mean, it's probably five, six hundred dollars. Another thought if I may, is perhaps, like, May or June, when the weather is decent, make the arrangements for it to come and set aside an afternoon. Sit down, discuss with you, just have the public available, maybe review some of the things that you discussed the past few months, anything you see on the rise. Maybe a couple of meetings like that might be beneficial to try to schedule the regular meetings. Shouldn't vary. I'd second it. I'll thank you.
Sure.
What was watching right here and I said it. It was between 107 and 110.
What about the scheduling, uh, and to come out on a day that we're going to have a meeting in May or June, July, August, and having to come out at noon and have a four-hour meeting greet and then a little break and then a meeting? You killed two birds with one stone.
Okay, so this, this leads me to a question for our town clerk. We do meet on the third Monday or Tuesday of the month. Is our time set also?
Yeah.
So we could shoot for a, he's got a, what, a four or five hour trip over here? If we could work that out with him, he's going to take the day anyway. He's going to lose it somewhere.
Yeah.
And, um, well, let me ask you this, Mr. Varnell. Do you think that the public would be too terribly inconvenienced if on occasion we had our town meeting at noon or one or 1:30?
I, I don't think it would be, I do believe that if it's formally held at seven, you should do it at seven. I think that if he were to leave his house today, about morning, he could get here by noon, spend four hours of meeting greet, have a break for dinner, and then come to the meeting at seven. It could be all done in one day and it could be a very productive day.
Yeah, so you're, so I'm just going to, you know, follow up here on your suggestion. So he leaves early, he comes, he's here till after seven and then spends the night somewhere before he goes home the next day. Okay, so we've not really beat much here other than to get him here earlier.
Put it easier earlier, you could have knew, but I think what everybody requesting is a, you know, like a four-hour meeting greet, walk around town, drive around town, you know, he's representing our town, representing us, but he's never been here in the daytime. He has no idea of the ins and outs of our town. It could be, it's going to be four hours because in summertime, there's going to be 1,000 people here and 200 are going to want to talk to.
I'm, I'm not so interested in a meet and greet. I think he, it's wonderful for him to understand the town and get to know the town. But I, I'm more interested in his legal counsel than just visiting with townspeople myself.
Well, his role isn't to provide legal advice to citizens, providing advice to town councilor. He probably wouldn't get into a situation where people-
Yeah.
... question. I don't think he has a clue how our freaks, lists and burns and comes through town and destroys where black streets are.
Well, sure, it's good for him to understand the town. That's what I said.
So a tour would be fantastic for him.
Sure, sure. The lay of the land, sure.
Productive for him.
And how wonderful our county is.
Um, so that, yes, and we could do that and that would require previous coordination to make that happen, but that's not something you would expect three times a year.
Oh, no.
Okay, so going back over here to what Mr. Ed Pinalto said, um, regarding the, just a random three times, that would be basically his pick. And then if we had enough heads up to invite him over on other occasions when we felt the need, perhaps following this pattern to, you know, we, we need you over here earlier and you're going to burn a day anyway, and maybe we could plan ahead and perhaps. I don't know how to do that. Um, I think the three times a year is fine. And then what does it say here? And also at the request of, um.
The Board of Trustees.
Yeah, and so, um, that request, well, that leaves the request up to our discretion and the answer up to him.
Through the discussion there, I would drop you down. They set up with him ahead of time, perhaps June and August coming. And then, and then third time, could be to his discretion.
All right, it sounds like Jared would like to see him a couple of times a year. I'm, I'm pretty sure I would, um, and Ed would. Um, so at his discretion with, um, so I'm going to pick up on what Ed said here. Are there any particular months of the year that we would specifically really like to have him? And you suggested June.
I'd say June, August, but maybe you go, leave it up to him to pick two out of three, June, July or August.
Yeah, summertime issue, yeah.
And then one other time outside of that at his discretion.
So twice in the summer and once some other time.
I know the issue we're going to run into is if we don't set some dates and come out, we're not going to be, we're going to get an agenda, 48 hours in advance. So, man, he needs, we need him here on, on year two, it's not going to happen.
Right, but he is on, he is on Zoom. And if we get him here three times a year, some of these things we can back up and catch a little more input on or some ahead of time perhaps.
Now, personally, talking to the guy in person a couple of times, in face-to-face, I feel way for comfortable talking to people on Zoom.
Yeah, since you've got, right.
Say that last sit, say that last sentence again, please.
Yep. If I could talk to face-to-face while he's here a couple of times a year. If I could talk to face-to-face while he's here a couple times a year, I'd feel way more comfortable talking to this one on Zoom.
Oh.
On the other end.
Okay.
So could we put that in there, uh, Sarah, twice during the summer season and once at his discretion elsewise?
So, what I'll do is I, I put that in the minutes and I'll provide that to him and see if he's willing to write that into the contract. Cause I'm not quite sure where that would go or if it'll happen to you.
Okay, so we're going to back up again because I didn't think we resolved this question about, uh, the base pay and the, uh, Sarah told us that typically, on average, there's a, an additional fifteen hours of legal service or work that is done on an annual basis. And how do we incorporate that? Whether we incorporate that with a invoice of additional hours on top of a, so base-based that and additional hours are then paid on top of that.
Instead of getting the same sum, question mark, or and, the sum of nine hundred dollars per month payable on each installment, payable monthly, I'm sorry. And then anything over than five hours is a hundred ninety dollars. Or for budgeting, we need to know that it's averaged ten to fifteen.
For budgeting, we do need to know that, yeah.
That doesn't need to be in the contract.
Okay, any other thoughts from up front here, and then I'm gonna go it out for one final go-round out here.
My only other thought on it, which is, I'm gonna be returning to this, but no guaranteed result, I think.
Okay, oh, there.
I realized here, I skipped a place. This is on exhibit A. It's about one, two, the third bullet point down. Where it says act as legal advisor to and counsel for the mayor, board of trustees, town boards slash commissions, and town administrators slash department heads of the town of Picken. Uh, and probably he did use a template like Sarah said. But, uh, and you know, our protocol seems to be that only two people can contact him. Uh, and that'd be Sarah and the mayor, so I don't, I don't know that we need or should have all of that in there if that would make.
Go too wide open?
Mm-hmm. If, if we don't want people calling him, I'm, I don't know.
Well, I don't.
That was my thought when I read it.
I, I read that bullet point too.
Okay.
That bullet point I read is he's a legal advisor for the mayor, the board trustees, town boards commissioners, town administrative department heads. So he's, he's our legal counsel for those positions. Should be, shouldn't be needed for that. That bullet point you need is not saying that who specifically to contact. And I, I see it that he works with the town, the board of trustees and the mayor. So it's the board of trustees and the mayor. If they feel the need to contact the town attorney, they have a right.
Say that last thing again. If they feel the need to contact the town attorney, what?
Yeah, if they feel the need of the board of trustee or the mayor, if they need to contact the attorney, then that's allowed. He, he works for all of us.
Well, that's, that was my question. If we wanted all of that in there, or did that mean that some, I guess the only one, other one we have are commissioners or zoning board. I just thought it was a little confusing.
Well, he does work for the town, as Ed said.
Uh, absolutely.
And as you pointed out, typically what happens is there's a legal question comes up up front and that gets frequently, uh, funneled through our town clerk and, and, uh, and then response comes back with basically one, uh, liaison, I guess I use for the word. I have, um, I think in the whole last, whenever I took over from Eddie, I have sent him a text twice. And, uh, and that's been my only contact with him other than on Zoom and from Sarah.
Well, I know many ten years ago or more, there was a problem and we ended up with huge attorney bills from, it wasn't necess, it wasn't townspeople, but possibly everybody who served, or not everybody, but more people who served were repeatedly calling and asking the attorney for advice. And got, and the town got billed for it and they really were not, that, that really wasn't protocol.
Right.
So I just, I just didn't know if that should be plainer on there.
Well, maybe plainer because Ed is correct. Uh, he is the legal advisor for all of the administrative.
Yes.
Uh, directors or whatever you wanna call them of the town.
Yes, absolutely, he is.
If you want to add a, some sort of addendum on, on, um, some protocol on how that is funneled back and forth, um.
No, it, it, it was just not real plain to me, and I remember in the past it had been a problem. That was all I was saying. I, I, you know, it doesn't matter to me. Just, I brought that up because we have had a problem in the past.
Yeah, so I'm sitting here thinking about this and I, 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 I remember, just as you do, and, uh,
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am, please.
This, this is just in the point of contrast. This is not town of Picken protocols. So what he's saying in this, in this contract is that his job is to X, Y, Z. If the town of Picken has a protocol on how the attorney is con- contacted, that, that arises from the town of Picken and it's not lawyer specific.
That's, that's right.
If, if the town wants to put in writing a protocol about that, then I would suggest maybe doing that separately from his specific contract, cause it would apply if we got a new attorney. So not, not necessarily telling him how he's going to do with his job or how he's.
No, I did not mean that. I, I, because I do think we have it written somewhere and I don't know where. And that there, that that is our protocol. But, and that's on our side. I just didn't know if, and I don't know, I'm not a legal person. I didn't know if this would conflict with our protocol, and I, I'm good with it however the board.
Right, well, there's no reason why it should. All right, I'm gonna call on, go ahead, Ed.
Jerry, were you, you're talking about the third bullet point on the.
Yes.
Yep. I.
If this is fine with the board, it's fine with me. I'm, I'm not a legalese person.
Let me clarify what you're saying. I believe what you're saying here, that, that whole point you're saying, is that, let's say one of the commissioners is sued by doing something with him. He's saying he will act as legal advisor and counsel for that commission.
Yes, he, he covers all of the, right.
Yeah, that's good.
And then the, the how the, uh, communication lines work, uh, could be covered under.
It, I think it is.
That's not part of this. Okay, Jesse, you got something?
Quick question. Is, uh, what did we budget for twenty twenty-five for our term?
Twenty thousand.
Awesome, because I've got fifteen thousand here just real quick. So I, I'm glad we go a little tight.
Thank you, sir. Um, so I guess I will ask at this time, is there, oh, Pete, sorry.
Uh, this question, Sarah, would we ask the town for employment taxes with town chair?
Sure, well, the town chair of employment taxes is six point two percent. So on nine hundred a month, that is about fifty-five dollars.
Six hundred dollars a year. Thank you, Pete.
There will also be a change with insurance, um, and I was not able to get an answer on what that is. Because if he's an employee, then he is covered under our property and guarantee insurance. And typically regardless of what we pay, there's, there's a minimum. So, for example, the trustees, even though their pay is quite minimal, there's a minimum amount of coverage that we have to supply for their work on the board. So, um, I will make sure to have that number before we do a budget on this, but I, I can't doubt that it's over twenty grand. I, I, I could be quite wrong about that, but I will find out that number.
Yeah, so tonight is, tonight is a work session, not a vote session.
Yep.
And so, um, that piece of information can come along at a later date and be added on. But the question is, are we basically happy with what we have, uh,
I am.
arrived at so far? Ed says he is, Ramon says he is, I think I am.
Ye- yes, I'm happy and I'm happy enough with, thankfully, we're happy enough with our chairman attorney because we don't have a long line of people either.
Okay.
We, we wanna keep that in mind that, that we need to be workable with him, I think.
So because this is a work session, uh, is there any last comment from our, those that have attended tonight? Or any on Zoom? Okay, then. I believe we can, uh, have Sarah write up what we have discussed and come up with. And, uh, and we can move on to the next topic. Sarah, does that seem correct and legitimate?
Yes, I think I have everything, but I'll just forward this on and play with some of the comments and questions and have him make adjustments.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is a one-page summary. Summary, I don't know if that's correct word or not. Uh, Mr. Pete Olson has been very helpful and very helpful in, in contributing this time and his expertise and, um, and I have looked through this, though now it appears I've lost it. Um, Pete, yeah, here it is. Is there anything you would like to, uh, say about this?
Well, let me just say that, um, Sarah and I did a few weeks ago talk with the town attorney. And that's the reason for a few strikeouts and the highlighted areas for you to consider. Um, just my philosophy of drafting this was that, uh, so I think it was maybe November, December, you were discussing some things about regulating or having some control over how spending occurred now. And, um, I piped up with a simple solution, that would be to have a spending clause. Uh, so I approached, tried to keep it simple. And I think it has two features that are sort of implied. One is that you're extending to your commissioners, you know, the authority rather than micromanaging them in minute detail, empowering them to, to see to fulfill their duties. And the second, second thing really, I think, relates to the last paragraph, yeah. Which indicates that budget requests due to white expenditure from the process, but that's just not a budget to put together. I know it's passed now occasionally, so, well, we did twelve thousand dollars last year, we dropped that up to fifteen. But there's no specifics of what that money might be spent. Clearly, it probably burdens most, you know, street commissioner, maybe the town hall, uh, the director of the sure, um, the typical of budget for its fall, but, um, the idea is to have some accountability, but also maybe some free planning. So as you get into the coming year, we eliminate the need to be some of the things spelled out here that are not specifically identified. That's the way. And then the, I guess, final comment would be, in talking to the town attorney, um, after I drafted this, this was Sarah, we had a question, if there's a statutory dollar about to be required. And as it turns out, there's nothing in the state statutes as it relates statutory talent spells out a specific amount. So this is just really you exercising a fiduciary responsibility to come up with something you're comfortable with. So ten thousand, five thousand was benchmarks. That's kind of an expression of the town where we go with statutory guidelines.
Thank you very much, very, very much, Pete. We appreciate your work and your expertise. All right, any comments from the front after having read this and, and being somewhat enlightened by, uh, Mr. Olson here?
So, the one question or comment I have on on number one, under the project cost expenditures will exceed even the ten thousand, five thousand dollars. There is the Colorado State statute thirty-one dash fifteen dash seven twelve that our county attorney put in an email to us. And I looked that statute up and it gives, I think, over, it says anything over five thousand dollars is to go after a big cost.
Can you tell me what that is again?
Thirty-one dash fifteen dash seven twelve.
Yeah.
And that's in, that's also in Clay's email, uh, which he sent on to us. All public improvement projects over five thousand must be bid.
Read that first three words, all what?
All public improvement projects over five thousand must be bid.
This, this also says city, and we're not a city. So this wouldn't apply necessarily. The town could, though, utilize this as a, a, an example. I mean, I don't think it's an unreasonable amount, but it could apply to cities and not towns.
But.
Is there a difference? I didn't, statutorily, what I have, in the statute?
Cities, towns are defined differently.
Instead, but we are all, we all have the same statutes.
Not necessarily, uh.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go off and play a detail. It says, yes, CRS thirty-one dash fifteen dash seven twelve applies to all municipalities, which is poorly written. All public improvement projects over five thousand must be bid. And we've asked the town attorney for his advice and given to us. I'm not gonna sit here and argue.
So in, in the meeting that we had, he said that it's, it's for cities, so at the town's discretion. The town may choose to follow the statute. But the town could also argue that it is not a city and is not required to do so.
But municipality, is that?
No, that's different. We're all municipality.
That's why I say we're all municipalities. Is that not a?
It typically says city. We're not a city.
It'd be nice if we didn't have.
Okay, hang on a second. I, I got one thing I wanna throw out here. This is neither here nor there. Then we're gonna see Pete. Public improvements.
Yeah.
Okay, Pete, go ahead.
One problem, that statute relates to public improvement projects. And discussing with the attorney such things as purchasing gravel, bank floor, I, those things are considered public improvement project. However, I think, you know, I think the issue is there is some statutory guidance that you can certainly use, but start at paragraph A one, but the limit being anything over five thousand dollars. Council doesn't need to go through a formal competitive bid process, but that, we say there are some specifications advertised for minutes. So, I mean, we didn't, we didn't really make a distinction in here about public improvement projects. It would be maintenance project, improvement, so. That's, that complicates. And understand that if you do competitive bid process, there are some achieving, following, it's best to get advertising, there's a favor, things like that, so.
My, my concern on if we follow the statute, if we have, you know, Clay came back and says those emails says we need to follow it, he came back and said, no, we consented at thousands for project costs, right? Then we have to get a bid process. I don't have a problem, that is double plan.
Well, yeah, so I understand what you're saying. The other thing I also understand is ten thousand dollars don't buy them. Very big hill of gravel. And so, there, it, when you talk about street maintenance, that's one thing. When you talk about developing a new street or opening an empty street. that's a whole different thing, see? And so I would consider widening streets for additional parking or, I don't know what else. There are things that are for the public improvement, not just the maintenance of what is already in place. And so how do we make that distinction? Because Jesse? Oh, I probably shouldn't do this, but it's a work session. How much money do we spend a year on gravel? Just a wild guess.
Sir, about how many, six loads and I remember the hourly rate for the trucks. Well, I remember the hourly rate for the trucks. Was it $15 a ton?
I don't recall.
Well, it is United Materials and we had six loads last year. So whatever that was is us to grant.
Yeah.
What we did on the gravel street. But when you talk, start talking about an improvement, if we re-surface Main Street, for example, I think that definitely is an improvement, not maintenance. If we patch a pothole or fill in a crack with tar, that's maintenance to me. Does that suit your liking?
Hey, I asked your opinion, Jesse. I wanted to hear it. So shall we shoot this back just for one last shot with Mr. Buckner regarding differentiating between what maintenance is and what constitutes a public improvement? Or should we just run this with, we think we know the difference?
I think really when it comes down to it, if the town has an idea of what it wants to consider public improvement versus maintenance, the town can define that, I believe, in the way that it wants to. As long as it follows a consistent definition for those things. Because I think that the purpose was to keep this as simple as possible. And if, you know, definitions and lists and things like that start being entered into the equation.
Well, they do.
Then, and really, the town also has the ability, it doesn't have to be for public improvement projects. The town could say any project over 5,000 or any project over 10,000, that way it's covering its bases, no matter what kind of project it does. That's not an unreasonable thing to do, but that would keep this document simple without, you know, adding definitions and other things like that, that may just make it more difficult to implement. So the town doesn't have to only put out bids for public improvement projects. It can put out bids for any projects if it wanted to.
Okay, well, this is just me, and I'm just a little bit leery of requiring all of our maintenance expenditures to fall under the same category as public improvement. But then, as you have said, well, we need to keep it simple.
I'm just thinking, more confusing or less?
There you go.
And number one, if project costs or expenditures for public improvements exceed $10,000, if we're okay with that number statute, then we can have a bid process. And then number two, leave that the way it's written. Minimum two written price quotes shall be obtained from project costs or expenditures. That way, it's under whatever the amount is, then it can be for maintenance or rock and what have you. It's under that dollar amount, then it goes up to two price.
I have a question. Why is the 20, the over $2,500 but less than, why is that struck out? Because striking that means that you got to get written price quotes for everything that's less than 10 or 5,000 dollars, whichever figure we go with. Even a few hundred dollars, saying you got to get two written price quotes.
Yes, please.
Well, again, talking with the attorneys, they're discussing how things typically go. I think having, again, simplify it, just requiring any expenditure in their improved budget that are going to occur, but are less than match the ultimate requirement of $1,000, you get a price quote. I mean, in other words, the idea is to have pretty decent public funds. And pretty simply, most instances, I imagine, get a couple of price quotes. That's $50, $700, whatever, that was the idea. Or if you want to allow people to spend up to X number of dollars, put a figure in there, not required, and you get a price quote. But again, proof of public development, they want your commissioners to get some price quotes so they have something to base.
So my, I'm, I was, I had a question about this too, because I think Ramon brought up a good point. And you said you wanted to make it less cumbersome, which everybody appreciates that for sure. The way this is written, is that right? What Ramon said, that means anything, like even a load of gravel? You have to get, which he, I guess, I think the street commissioner always did. You always got, but, but to, but to have to, to have to do that, I'm just a little, and then the next question, my other question about this same number two is this, and I don't know for sure what this means, but this requirement does not apply when the project or expended, whatever expenditure involves cooperation with another governmental entity. So does that mean, for instance, the, if the street commissioner calls the county to do something, he doesn't have to have any price quotes? Is that what that says?
Well, there's number three.
The intention, because the town has an ongoing relationship with the town, that the complete plowing and street work, and rather than requiring, for example, with plowing specifically, that the town find somebody who would be willing to give a price quote, plowing that the county does, which we already know is not possible, has not been possible. The town can continue that ongoing relationship. Similarly, that fluoride with the county and the gravel work that they've been doing for the past two years, they can continue to do that because it's another governmental entity.
Some, I don't know, Mr. Street Commissioner, some, was the county always cheapest? That would sure expedite the street commissioner's thing if he only had to deal with them. But I don't know if that would be a fiduciary responsible thing to do. Did, was the county always competitive?
If you're impressed, yes, yes. When it comes to back fluoride and back fluoride is somewhat competitive. And right now I have three people preparing bids for back fluoride. All of it comes out of Grand Junction and I forget the nation of the company that provides back fluoride. But the reason the county is so competitive to everybody else is the fact that we get the mortar truck and the road grader and operator to prepare for the back fluoride. And I've not found anybody that competes. Now, when we get to gravel, Mr. Boltz and I were fiddling about the pricing per ton. And even though one of yours, United Materials, was just, I like a dollar a ton higher than the Michi Materials. But we both liked the product from United better than to Michi. And so we went with United. And that's my tendency, with what I've known in the past, I do prefer United's three-quarter road base over to Michi. But when it comes to filter or bin lather, to Michi out there is United.
So does the county, the county uses both of those companies or can you make a preference? I don't want your job. I'm just saying, because I think whatever's simplest for the town commissioner, of course, being who I am, that's great. But I just want us to be responsible too.
My biggest problem is knowing when to require three bids or two bids or go with what has been working in the past, then the most economical route. That was my big deal for next month.
Yeah. So backing up to A, which where the bullet points one, two, and three fall under. It says commissioners may use budget funds for projects and expenditures, which are specifically identified in the annual budget request. Because we, that's the goal, is that when we make up a budget, we've already got an idea of what this is going to cost because we.
What we do is best by culverts. We kind of take the information from the past of culverts, information from the past of gravel, information from the past of back fluoride, or the application of road grader.
Right, and those things are not specifically identified. And so at such time, you would get bids on those.
So we may have to change something, make that specifically identified.
So when you, well, okay, so back to culverts and streets and so forth. When you look back across how many culverts we put in the ground in a year, you could probably guess, well, this year we're going to, you know, in our budget, we need enough budget for three culverts. Because something's going to happen.
I hope we're getting closer to having pretty well.
Well, yeah, that would really be nice, wouldn't it? Okay. Ed's waiting to talk, go ahead.
Two thoughts, though. Don't let me get past your, you know. But just on that, I guess generally commissioners have purchasing authority for town. Sorry, commissioners may use budget funds for projects specifically identified in the annual budget. We've already set the budget for this year. And we haven't identified specifics throughout that whole budget of how many culverts and stuff. This year, because we haven't done that already, we've got to go with what comes in, basically. But we work towards at the end of this year, when we're creating our budget, October, November, December, we have an idea of projecting what we're going to need next year to create that budget. I think, I think that's one thing, so we don't get hung up and say, well, we already have a budget. Well, we have a budget, but we didn't really earmark it. The others, they only go back to Ramon's comment on number two. Because without that expenditures, with that 2,500, or whatever the number is, with that being crossed out, it all, this is a scenario that can happen. We leave it the way it is. Let's say a street sign gets bowed down. We need to replace the posts. The way this is written, our street commissioner has to get two written price quotes for a post.
So I think that there may be some confusion between bids and price quotes. A price quote just means you look at, you call two lumber yards and you say, how much is a four by treated? And you get two written quotes on the cost. It doesn't mean you have to have, put out something in the paper and get a bid. It's just you're just price shopping, that's all it is.
I understand that. But it's still, we need to replace the sign posts. We're not going to use, whoever, I don't know if we have an account set up for Western or Alpine. We're not going to just use them to get a post. We're going to have to call and get two written price quotes. You're going to call them, they're going to have to email it to you. Paragraph D, I know paragraph D will take care of some of that. But that all depends on what that is annually for paragraph D to what number two looks.
I think, you know, it's even more, I'll give you one example that comes to my mind as soon as I read this. If I want to hire someone to clean the town hall, which might, depending on what I'm asking for, might be 200 or might be $450. Frankly, I don't know two people that I could get a written price quote from. I do know one, if I can talk her into it. But, you know, I think at some point here, we have to leave, you know, some things to the discretion of the people who are doing this. And, you know, and I do see putting some limits on that, that the, that's why I asked, why is this scratched out? Because scratching that out basically does not put a bottom limit on it. It means, you know, if I want to, you know, get polished for the floor for 50 bucks or something, that I can't go down to Ace Hardware and buy it, I got to get two written quotes. And frankly, I don't want to waste my time doing that.
I agree with Ramon, and I think that would get back to the, you want to make it less cumbersome.
Well, I have a problem that I was just saying, if you put paying projects, cost for expenditures over X number of dollars, about what you're comfortable, to put that right down to paragraph D is what. You're comfortable with your commissioners.
Yeah.
$5,000 or $500, whatever it comes, that makes sense.
Yeah. I, you know, there's a point that, you know, the time wasted to do something is more than what you're trying to do. So.
Yes, I agree.
And keep in mind, all of our commissioners are volunteers. They're not paid for running around getting written quotes, or being on the phone. And I'm just saying, you call Western, Alpine, and ask for a quote, and you keep doing that, they're going to be crazy. But also remind you, when I look at the budget for last year, we didn't go over budget on anything for any commission. So we're trying to squeeze this down so tight that it's going to make it more difficult to get commissioners to volunteer their time.
So Ramon, you're suggesting that there needs to be some number here where this 2,500 got crossed out?
I do. I think there, you know, I don't, you know, I'm not, hadn't really thought about what that number should be. But, you know, I think that, you know, especially when we're looking at the ordinary and expected things, that the, the people were asking to do this have to be given some discretion to do it, you know, without going through hoops on every little thing.
So I'll just throw a number out there. Instead of the 2,500, expenditures are over 1,000, 1,500? Is that all of, does that make?
Sure, I don't have a problem with setting that at some, some number. But just, you know, taking that out, just basically dropped it to anything you spend.
You need a box of nails.
Yeah.
Well, I was just showing Pete, my comment was common sense as a commissioner and treat it as though it's his own business or project. And then communicating with the mayor if you have any question. And, but that's also pretty well covered in C.
Well, that's for emergency, C is a right, you know.
You might get caught in an emergency. But even in an emergency situation, like a ditch overflowing, you're to protect the property and take care of, and you're not getting into a thousand bucks. But if something comes up and the whole street's flooded, you know, hold the mayor and say, what do you recommend here? Is this viable approach to it? When the wall fell, the. When the wall fell down the the city hall, we'd better get uh order back up or or support it so we don't lose the whole building. Uh, I I think Ramon is pretty well on track. The challenge that I kind of feel like, especially in D, uh, when you have a budget of about twenty five hundred dollars or whatever it is at the cemetery, and you have a fixed number, a percentage, and then you have a budget of thirty thousand, no removal effect, for example, and you have the same five hundred dollar expenditure. Uh, really doesn't make sense to me. And I just happen to be on the cemetery board. Uh, I don't know if a ten percent of a budget item or something is a viable number to try to help me find these. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. All right, so back up to the uh expenditures over. After listening to you guys, I think uh, you could throw a thousand dollars in there and not feel bad about yourself.
I number two.
Yeah, I can, I can agree with that. Worse. Um, and Jesse just reminded me of something else on D. Incident. Let's just take the word incidental off the front of that. What's, because we could sit here and argue all night about what is an incidental expenditure. So let's just say expenditures.
B block paragraph.
D.
Say again, P. You even block paragraph.
Oh.
I I I'll tell you what I like with D, having that in is it gives any of the commissioners the freedom that they need to make a decision right now to do something. It gives them that leeway to do, I don't care which commission it is. Now, the my feelings on the five hundred dollars annually, uh, when you have Parks and Rec that has a forty one hundred dollar budget and streets down to fifteen thousand, street maintenance down to fifteen thousand, town hall, capital, four thousand, area maintenance is thirty five thousand, that that with the brand. I'd be more inclined to go with instead of a five hundred dollars annually, a percent of that budget, percent of the budget, a ten percent. Look at street, street maintenance, ten percent of fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred dollars. If he needs to make a decision to do something, um, Parks and Rec is four hundred and ten. Ditches would be a thousand dollars. Those are.
So that's if you run with the ten percent on all of them.
Yep, around ten percent of each of the budgets.
Okay, so.
I can go with that.
So something that I think though is important to keep in mind is that this is non-budgeted expenditures. This is incidental, so you know, you gotta fix the weed eater, that kind of stuff. So really, anything major should be covered in the budgeted expenses category. And incidental really should not be three thousand dollars for a category or fifteen hundred for a category. They should, they should be primarily budgeted with a small amount for, you know, somebody needs to go out and buy paper or pens or fix a weed eater or whatever. That's what this, that's what this is for, not for major expenditures.
I I agree, Sarah, but let's say fifteen hundred dollars for straight, streets incidental. That's for the whole year.
Well, okay, so.
For the ten percent of the budget.
Yes.
For incident.
So you're.
Not one or two, I.
Yeah, you're bringing this up and um, and what's going through my head is, well, he can do this up to this point one time. We could put a reset clause in there. So he brings his problem that he had to spend his money on to the board. And they say, well, you didn't have a choice, man. You had to do this.
Paragraph B to cover that.
Does paragraph D cover that? Okay.
Did you say B?
I mean, that that kind of, because the paragraph B is kind of catch all the allows commissioner to come to you, clarify some things that you weren't anticipating or what it was in the bunch. The other thing, going back to your discussion.
Approved paragraph, yes.
Place in there is a request to be, right, monthly reports, and updates, and paragraph B also gives you the opposite information in particular. That interaction that kind of. I think what you put in paragraph D would be, you know, incidental expenditure, use a ten percent annual. Then paragraph B is available if that ten percent gets upon.
Yeah, well, so made this as simple as possible, and I miss that.
I I'm not even sure D needs to be in there. I I'm thinking about, I'm chairman of the cemetery board. And you know, everything is voluntary and I I just so appreciate Pete not wanting to make it too cumbersome. Because when we we try to get together and we're we're gonna, we need to do this or we need to do that or something comes up. And if you have to worry too much about, I don't, I'm just saying, people, when you have volunteer, you have to do things when you've got volunteers to do them. Sometimes these expenditures come up and you need, you've got to get on the bandwagon. Our work season is so small anyway. And and then what, you know, our volunteer, most of the volunteers are the people who aren't here all year. And and while they're here and they're willing to work, we've got to work and you've got to make decisions. It's hard enough to get a meeting together, let alone try to wade through too much. So I would, I do appreciate that this is not very cumbersome, but we want to keep it that way. And I I'm not even sure we need D myself. That's just my thought.
Well, I'm gonna disagree a little bit there because uh, if you back up, B covers it. And then the other thing is, uh, mostly your commissioners know what. If you're gonna plant thirty new fence posts around this thing and uh, and you got that in your budget for the next year, um.
It's just.
Pulling that, pulling that crew together to put them in the ground is the problem, not not the budget.
Oh, no, I, no, I would respectfully disagree. We, there are times in that cemetery, we we have, we've got to get on the bandwagon and we do very well, we try to do very well with our budgeting. And but I I just want us to keep it simple, but and if you've ever sat on these boards, committees, the more you have to go through committees and get permission and all of it, it takes so much time. And in this town, our season does not allow us a whole lot of time. But we've, we do very well, but we want to keep it as simple as possible. So thank you, Pete, for doing that.
Well, my two cents is communication at work, anything that on this proposal.
I'm looking back to the reason, I guess the reason I like that incidental expenditure, we can pick out incidental, but but let's say it's ten percent of the budget, a thousand dollar payment. That gives the commissioners, if they if they want to make a decision to do something, going to use Ramon in Christmas time, he made the comment, I I would like to have the opportunity to Christmas lights on town hall. Well, yeah, okay, you could plan for that. I agree. Come along, remember it's like, oh, that would be kind of nice if you do that. And you found someone that could do it for five hundred dollars on every mountain. Then he has the leeway to to go ahead and do that. I guess that's, that's why I like D. It's a little or something. Yeah, I'll say a low cost expenditure. Forget the commission, it will be way to to go ahead and make that decision. That's why I like. I like B to cover big things. I'm okay with one and two, whatever. Figure out.
I like B, like what Sarah said, take, take inches, for example. Let's go on the two cycle oil, uh, spray for the weed eaters, gasoline for weed eater, aerosol for the weed eaters, those are heavy, but they have, but they are incidental and and good, that do that weed eater, weed eater is working.
Yeah. So. That would go under the D, I see.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Expenditures and.
And I think those are five hundred to ten percent of whatever budget is, is a good guideline. I think, yeah, especially this, I I definitely would stay in that discipline.
I have one, one more suggestion. Um, and this is just basically for Sarah. When you make corrections to this and prepare it for for board action. Um, the very first paragraph, first sentence. I would like to see that either capitalized or in bold print. Because that's what this is really all about. And in a, in effect, this whole thing will take effect as soon as we adopt it. But it's not really going to go into effect until next year, assuming we do this budget preparation with these things in mind. And and that's what this is really for, is to, you know, for both the board and the commissioners to understand, you know, we need to do some planning when we do our budget. And, you know, that is just, you know, I've kind of watched it over the years become less and less and less to the, to the point where there's no planning. We just take basically the numbers from last year and maybe add some things or whatnot. But what this is really all about is to to get people to stop and think, you know, yeah, in the fall or even late summer, that we need to look at what we're going to be doing next year and what things are going to cost and develop the budget around that. So Sarah, that's basically for you. I think just that first sentence is the most important part of this whole document.
You're talking to these purchasing guidelines, that sense.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me summarize here what we're looking at here with what we've run through. It's pretty much, we like this. Uh, we would like a thousand dollars there where we crossed out the twenty five hundred. We need to come up with, uh, are we happy with, uh, public improvements versus maintenance at some discretionary level of the commissioners?
The dollar.
And the dollar amount. And other than that, I think we're good.
Can you repeat that, please? I'm not sure exactly what.
Okay, so.
I have for written price quotes over a thousand to less than five. And then.
And then. Yeah, so our next question is leaving the discretion of what is maintenance versus what is a public improvement? Do we leave that with the commissioners?
You want that written into the policy?
That's the question.
Okay.
It's, so it was a question up front here, just kind of my rhetorical question, really. Um, and then, and then what kind of numbers do we want to use, the five thousand or the ten thousand? Now, um, for those things that are already in existence, with the exception of repaving Main Street, as Jesse brought up. Um, if they're already there, uh, and you're maintaining them, that's maintenance. If you're building new stuff, that ain't.
Yeah. You know, if you read this, if project costs are expended, well, a project includes the public approval project. It's already included, I mean, whatever dollar number you're covering. Cities apparently have a five thousand dollar. You have the discretion to ten or fifteen, wherever you want to use. But I don't think you have to get caught in the weeds trying to determine what is a public approval project. Most likely, any public approval that you're gonna do will be pretty pricey, it'll require a bit of, you're gonna exceed whatever dollar amount it is. You might, so let me put a different twist on that. Um, I guess reinforce one. He can say that. Let's say we have a maintenance on the street. We've got to repair a street. And it's over the five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars. Don't we want, wouldn't we want that to go out on bid losses? It's not necessarily a public improvement, and it could be maintenance on the street. And if it's still, whatever that number is, it was five thousand or ten thousand, I think you still want to go out and bid losses if it's that high of dollar, particularly if it's ten thousand.
But I would not disagree with that.
So then, at that point, to peace. You leave it, this is project cost or expenditure, you exceed the ten thousand dollars, then we go through competitive bid losses. And if it's a minimum of two written price quotes, if it's over a thousand, but less than whatever that is. I I think that number has got to be similar to the number up on one.
It it should be the same number.
Should be the same, but yeah.
So did the board want to do ten or five?
Yeah, that's the question.
I would say considering the town budget, five would be more appropriate.
Well, five would keep us in those parameters that, um.
Right, so if anybody wants to call the city, we'd still be in line.
Five is, was the number is.
Five is what's in the stash.
I would hope for five.
I'm fine with five.
And I have no problem in the streets with that either. Now, one of the things to describe maintenance versus improvement in Parks and Rec, what we're gonna do to fix our current playground equipment is make what we're fixing to add to, I believe, is a public improvement. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, pro tam.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the next sentence here. This requirement does not apply when the project or expenditure involves, and that's after what Ramon said about a sole source, like for cleaning, I I would still like that in there.
This is operation with another governmental.
Well, that he, they took out, though, they took out sole service provider. And what I'd like it to say is unless it involves this, you know, expenditure involves a sole source provider or cooperation with another government entity, I would just like that.
Like sole source.
I'd like that, and then just add the word or cooperation with it because of what Ramon said. I hadn't really thought of that, and I think he's correct on that.
We only got one house cleaner in town.
Well, and sometimes, sometimes the street commissioner couldn't find anybody for, to do other things too. He he always looked, he spent a lot of time.
I think Jer has a point. Any thoughts up here?
I think she got a point, but also look, this is a purchasing guideline. So if if we go ahead, let's say Ramon tries to go out and get a part of the price quote, can only get one. And he comes back to the to the mayor or to the board and says, I only have one quote, that's all I can get. I I don't know if we have to be stuck in the weeds. Well, the the attorney had some concern about the term sole source provider. While I was drafting this, I kind of knows around this Colorado organization trying to find a reasonable definition of sole source provider. It's one of the state departments has about a five page policy on social. About, and so making that what the attorney said, that's why we got the authority to do. I think, I think some of the other provisions in here sort of cover that issue. And, you know, if it gets to the point where it exceeds the amount listed here, you know, bring it back to the council and consider that, or if it's emergency, or the mayor.
But just so we're not encumbering the commissioners that can only find one.
Right. Well, I I think, yeah, if you have those dollars, I doubt there could be a whole lot of stuff that's you know, cost of the five thousand dollars or what's it. Kind of a problem like that. I mean, I market process may need to amend it in the year, but you know, the whole, the whole thing is just back to your conversation several months ago about having subway.
about having some way to have accountability for the commission. And just provide some guidelines and come to the problem, build it at that time.
Yeah, that's why we wanna keep it as simple as possible, and I appreciated that.
But, um, so going with what Jared says and what with Ramon says and what with what Pete says, the concept of a sole service provider can arise because you can't get anybody else. And at such time, then there needs to be notification somewhere that I've, I've tried and I've tried and I can't, and somebody says, okay. And if that's the mayor, that's me, says, okay, you've tried. Make record of that and.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if the case is that, and I may have one coming up with the town hall too, that if, if it's the case that you know, there, there's no point in putting it out for public bid if it's a sole source provider. The, the whole point of this is, you know, to be able to deal with everything and what from, from my standpoint as a town hall commissioner, this just means I gotta come to the board and we discuss it. Yeah, we can buy this or not. Um, so it's, you know, it's not really a case of you know, that you can't do something because this says, you know, it doesn't apply to this or whatever. It's basically, it should encourage the, the commissioners to simply bring it to the board and let's have the discussion about it and the board can approve whatever is appropriate.
And you can sit someplace in your, for that effect. You know, if circumstance arises, if the commissioner unable to comply with of this office, they may seek approval from mayor, Alcoa, whatever you want to, you know, stack something like that in there.
Just so Ramon, I mean, I wouldn't think Ramon would have to be, have to come to the board and before he could get a hold of this thing, this sole source provider to clean, you, you just don't want, I don't want you to have to wait till a town council meeting uh, be, before you could get the town hall cleaned, you know what I mean? I just want it to be less cumbersome for the commissioners.
And, and this basically, you know, major project type of things.
I wouldn't think anybody would have a problem, but I, we don't want this to make it so someone could make a problem. So I, I'm, I'm really good with this.
Well, I kinda feel like we've, uh, covered our bases tonight. Um, any comments or additions from the board or those sitting out here tonight?
Ed, you're thinking, I see it. And Sarah, I see you're gonna retype the some, shoot back out to us.
Correct.
Well, in that case, I would like to thank each and every one of you and Mr. Miller as well for being part of this discussion tonight and for coming out on such a lovely spring evening. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, this meeting is adjourned.